Good afternoon. Welcome. Thank you for coming in. Let's go straight to the action of one A. It's the approval of minutes of April 4, 2016, which you have in your record.
So moved?
Thank you. Any discussions? Let's move for the adoption of the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstention. The minutes are approved. Policy item number one B one, John Jay College M.A. in Human Rights.
I move adoption of this item.
Second the motion.
Yes, I'd like to give a brief explanation of the M.A. in Human Rights. This is an interdisciplinary curriculum that will help students develop and deploy practice-oriented skills necessary for a variety of postgraduate applications, such as fact-finding, report-writing, advocacy, project management, and media outreach. Graduates from the proposed program, which is unique in CUNY, will be well-prepared for a variety of rapidly growing professions in the nonprofit, government, and private sectors, including those in development, public health, international affairs, environmental sciences, humanitarian aid, corporate social responsibility, and diplomacy and governance. This 36-credit program is one that John Jay can launch immediately and will require few external new resources.
We're very proud of this at John Jay. I think it's a wonderful addition to our work in justice, not just criminal justice, but justice. Human rights is a very important part of our curriculum, so I'm very, very proud to have moved this for adoption.
Likewise, yeah. Given what's going on around the world.
Yes.
Any other questions, discussions? If not, any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? The motion carries. Item number one B two, Lehman College M.S. in Organizational Leadership.
The purpose of this program is to prepare candidates to assume various leadership positions within a variety of fields, including higher education, not-for-profit, corporate, and healthcare. These are all fields with tremendous opportunity in the Bronx. The program will provide opportunities for high-quality, accessible, and affordable graduate leadership education for residents in the Bronx and surrounding areas. Lehman would be the only CUNY institution to offer this innovative 30-credit degree.
I move adoption of this program.
Second it?
Second the motion.
Second if I trust you, Martino. Discussions?
I think this is a great program. I think it's wonderful for our students and for their patients. So I think this is terrific work.
Yes.
I'm so glad CUNY is taking the lead on this one.
Exactly. This will meet the needs of so many adult learners and so many professionals who seek to improve their situation. It's just a very smart.
So let's move to question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item number one B three, New York City College of Technology, B.S. in Business and Technology of Fashion. The president here.
Excellent, yes. This innovative B.S. in Business and Technology of Fashion will combine basic courses in accounting and marketing with cutting-edge courses in merchandising, textiles, and e-commerce, thus providing graduates with a valuable set of skills and knowledge relevant to the fashion industry, which of course is one of the largest employers in New York City. Again, it's a program that is absolutely right for New York City Tech, and it builds on their AAS program, which has seemed to become an AS program. The demonstrated need for the program is there, and this will require a few new resources, although there is planned for up to two new faculty lines depending on enrollment growth and a dedicated textile lab.
You have a motion?
Yes, I move adoption of this program.
I get it.
Second.
Discussions? Questions? Straightforward. Long overdue.
Right.
Moving right along, so let's call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item number one B four, LaGuardia Community College A.T. in Therapeutic Recreation.
Yes. LaGuardia Community College proposes to establish an Associate of Science Degree in Therapeutic Recreation. The program will be offered through the Department of Health Sciences and aims to equip students with the necessary skills and competencies required to function effectively as a recreation therapist and recreation leader or assistant. This program was developed with the vision of providing a first-degree program for the many students who have an interest in allied health career, and the program has an articulation agreement with the Bachelor's Degree in Therapeutic Recreation already existing at Lehman.
I move adoption of this program.
Second.
Second if I trust you, Martino. Discussions? Questions?
That's terrific.
In that case, let's call the question. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations. Item number one B five, Lehman College, Establishment of the Department of Computer Science.
Yes. Pursuant to a very deliberate process of academic and institutional renewal, and following consultation by the president and provost with the faculty involved and with college governance, Lehman College proposes to create a new academic department called the Department of Computer Science. Since the computer science programs and courses will henceforth reside in the new Department of Computer Science, the Department of Mathematics and Computer Science will be renamed the Department of Mathematics. The new departments will better reflect the diverse academic disciplines in which the current mathematics and computer science faculty are credentialed. It's anticipated that the proposed organizational change will promote program synergy and growth, improve curricular development, and increase educational opportunities for students in these growth areas, as well as aid in more focused faculty recruitment, enhance scholarship and research, and provide faculty development opportunities in both departments. The faculty for the new Department of Computer Science will be identified through their academic qualifications and credentials to teach in the designated.
Yes, I move this revision of the structure of the college.
Second it?
Second.
No, I think this is wonderful, that the computer science faculty will have their own department and be distinguished from the mathematics faculty. And there are sufficient numbers of faculty for a viable department.
Yes, right, for two viable distinct departments.
Right.
Yes.
No other questions? Let's move to question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number one B six, City University of New York, CUNY Master Plan 2016 to 2020.
Yes. Thank you. Colleagues, we are pleased to present the CUNY Master Plan 2016 to 2020. And I want to apologize in advance for the short timeframe in which you had to read the document. This effort to both chronicle the progress CUNY has made in the last four years and set forth its ambitions for the next year is one that we are proud to present to you. Again, it represents a great deal of work from a great deal of people throughout the central offices and was distributed to the entire CUNY community for comment. We have attempted to incorporate. It has been online for the last three weeks, and we've received over 40 comments, including comments from colleges and from individuals. Again, the timeframe was challenging, and I'm sorry that it could not permit more consultation, but I believe that the final document is a worthy one, and welcome your comments and thoughts.
Motion.
Yes.
I move adoption. I second trustee Martino's motion.
Discussions? Questions?
Mr. Chair, with all due respect to the provost, and with full recognition of the significance of this master plan, I have not had any input to this, and I believe that the timeframe is too short. I don't know whether, quite frankly, within the next two weeks, I would be in a position to be at the full board meeting in which this was adopted and give my unanimous approval. Master plan, I know the level of effort that went into this, but I think all trustees should have ample time to really go through and critique and make their suggestions. I do believe, I heard you say that you've had over 40 comments on this already.
Yes.
Have they been incorporated, or at least pulled into this document in any way?
Yes, trustee Shorter, they have, or virtually all of them. I would like to invite my colleague David Crook, if I may, Chairman Chen, to the table, because University Dean Crook was the one who saw the 40 comments. I saw all of the college comments, and again, we worked very hard to incorporate almost all of the thoughtful comments.
And these have been on, and this has been online for three weeks?
Yes. When did it date? Do we know when it was posted?
It would have been mid, I'm not sure exactly when, but I think the second week of May.
Yes, something like that. At least three full weeks, but not much more than that, trustee Shorter. I would also like to add another consideration. At the same time we are developing the master plan, the chancellor is also leading an effort to launch the CUNY strategic framework for the same time period, 2016 to 2020. And some of the bolder directions that we intend to take will be included in the strategic framework. So here, we've tried to provide general direction, but not necessarily the bold new initiatives that will, you know, that will do the signatures of these directions. I fully understand your point about the timeframe.
Vice Chancellor Rabinevitz, can you tell us the process and the timeline for the strategic framework?
Yes. The strategic framework was launched by the chancellor last summer. We met in July of 2015 for the first time. The steering committee was composed of a group of presidents, faculty, people recommended by college leadership, and the committee met about once a month for the first six or seven months after it launched. The committee was assisted by AKA associates, Anthony Nurr, and his consulting group, who also assisted with SUNY's strategic framework. And there have been consultations on the campuses. We are incorporating comments, aligning it with the master plan, and we hope to have something out to the community sometime this summer.
There's also wide consultation with about at least six or seven different councils, admissions council, administrative council, the provosts, to get input, wide input into their thinking about the directions of the university. I can say that the master plan, which I was part of those discussions, part of the strategic planning, and so a lot of the discussion there informed the master plans as well, so.
How many trustees were interviewed for this plan?
I know a number of them were.
But not all?
Not all of them, no.
And there were also, trustee Shorter, there were also interviews with prominent New Yorkers and others, and national leaders who have a perspective on CUNY. For example, heads of major foundations, business leaders, and the like, to get their candid feedback about the university.
Forty, forty interviews, at least.
Is Mr. Norr still working as the consultant?
He is still working with us, but we are, the steering committee is taking charge of the next step, but he's absolutely still with us, just not in the same capacity.
So what's the timeline going forward? So that, I mean, I'm not aware that the faculty, except we do have one person on the strategic, the steering committee.
Right, there are some faculty on the steering committee.
Oh, well, the UFS has a chair.
That's right, and the UFS chair is on the steering committee.
Right, that's the only UFS member. And we've not been consulted except once Mr. Norr met with us. But we have no idea what's in the strategic plan at all.
Right, again, that will, right, and that, of course, will be shared once it's in a form, worthy of sharing with the community. I will also say that aside from the steering committee, there were three separate committees, one on student affairs, and that involved vice presidents from the colleges and other stakeholders, and it was led by President Felix Matos Rodriguez. There was a subcommittee on global CUNY that was led by President Chase Robinson, and there was a, was it digital?
Digital, yeah.
Yes, and there was a digital CUNY subcommittee co-led by Ann Kirshner. So there were, you know, there were other committees that brought in other members of the community.
We expect to have a draft to share by the summer, midsummer sometime, and then it'll be widely, we really plan to have a full set of discussions with the community once we have something that we feel is ready to share.
What is the draft that will be put out? What draft are you?
That's the strategic framework.
The strategic framework. Will we incorporate the plan, or is it the other way around?
Right. The two will be aligned. The two will be aligned. In other words, as the chancellor read the master plan, we ensured that the general direction that the master plan pointed out, first of all, we'd like to think it grows organically from what we've been doing.
What, which grows organically?
That the strategic framework and the master plan have grown, you know, we'd like to think that they have been predictable from the direction of the university over the last four years. There were some, for instance, we intend to accelerate graduation rates. We will even make a bold prediction about improvement based on our current direction. We're going to talk about new forms of access. So the strategic framework and the master plan will be aligned.
I hope you don't take this as some sort of grilling, but, and I don't mean it that way, but is this, which of the two documents is going to lay out a process for moving forward? Is that the strategic framework?
Yes, the strategic framework.
So the strategic framework will pick up and set the process for implementing components of the master plan?
It will set forth very clear goals and directions. It will come with an implementation plan, the strategic.
Strategic framework will come with implementation plan.
Yes, it will.
Which will flow from goals and objectives from the two documents.
That's right.
And that is in the process now?
It's in the process. Again, we hope to have a draft to share in the summer, but of course, it will not be formally adopted till the community is together, again, in the early fall.
So will the strategic framework be brought to CAPRA for approval and the full board?
I'm sure it will be brought to the full board, and will probably come through CAPRA.
If I may, in this case, the master plan is really a compliance document to some extent. SUNY has to submit one, CUNY has to submit one, the private sector has to submit one in the for-profit sector. And these documents go to State Ed, and they prepare a report for the regions that gives an overview of what the cross-section of the universities in the state are doing.
Right.
And this has been done now every four years to be in compliance with.
Thank you, president.
So the master, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I was just going to say.
The master plan, the master plan does not provide any kind of strategic process for going forward.
It is.
Is nothing more than a general plan.
It's a general plan, based on actual accomplishments and directions, but it is a general plan, you're correct.
So the strategic plan will be a, just so that, to understand.
No, no, this is our first city strategic framework, Karen. Right, your question is a good one.
Right, so that's why I'm trying to get an understanding, and I appreciate your explaining. So can we anticipate a document longer than this master plan?
No, it will not be longer. It will look more like a, it will be a shorter and more dynamic document. It will not read like a well-researched report. This is a report. It is, as President Holton explained, it is a compliance document. We took it seriously, by the way. We took it very seriously, but it's a compliance document. But along with specific goals, for example, how much do we propose to raise graduation What will be the, you know, how are we redefining access in the 21st century in this plan? So aside from that, though, it will also include, to get to trustee Shorter's concerns, you don't put out a plan that's bold and not give the community a sense of how you're going to achieve it. So how do you move the need on graduation rates? How do you raise them, for example, 10 points?
Okay. So to trustee Shorter and CAPRA, to set point, going forward with the strategic framework, the process hopefully is more inclusive and more engaging.
Yes.
So therefore, just describe a little bit of how, the timeline, besides the timeline, how you intend to address some of these concerns.
Right, good question. This process was abbreviated in part because of a very tough timeline that did not permit an extension. So we needed to file with the state this year. And obviously, under optimal circumstances, we would have started this process two years ago. I began my position in July, and first, no excuses, it didn't get started, it didn't get launched in earnest until the fall. This, the strategic framework, on the other hand, has no hard and fast deadline, and that's why I know it will go through process appropriately. That said, again, I hope you find that this plan, while you have understandable concerns about process, that the plan itself reflects fairly where we have come in the last four years and provides general direction for what we think is important in the foreseeable future.
So there's, I think I heard you say there's a mandate that this has to be approved. So if the board did not approve this on June 27th, we'd be in violation of that mandate?
The board would not be in violation, CUNY would be in violation.
Ergo, and therefore?
Yeah, well, we are hopeful that you will approve the plan. I will find out what will happen if, you know, if CAPRA does not approve it, and I will let you know.
We have one of the most knowledgeable presidents here, President Hasler knows this process more than anybody else in this state, and so I would.
Well, I wrote a few of these going back with David and a few others, and I had given the chancellor my feedback on it, but I thought it was one of the more comprehensive documents. I understand the issue about timing, but this is, as I said, a compliance document, and I think it more than fulfills the expectation with regard to the state and paints a pretty good picture of where we've been and our aspirations going forward. I think the strategic plan will provide the appropriate direction.
Well, you know, in the past, the master plan has been described as a blueprint for the next four years, and in the past master plans, there were such statements as, "We shall have a school of journalism," and then there was a school of journalism created by action of the board, or "We will have a school of public health," or "We will have a medical school." So it's been in the past a real blueprint. This document is really more a summary of the last four years, and I assume it was done purposely because it's a strategic framework.
Because we're doing this for CUNY.
Right, right.
That's exactly right, Karen.
So we understand this, and the UFS's executive committee has met several times with Vice Chancellor Rabinevitz. One of those meetings was with Director Crook. And we've given several suggestions. There are some things that we were concerned about that haven't been changed. The specific one we're really concerned about is the need to specify that the School of Professional Studies have full-time faculty. They comment in the master plan that says that there will be more faculty, doesn't specify full-time faculty, and our fear is, we do not want a school that is all mostly adjunct And so that's one of the changes we were really hoping for, and I've been directed to abstain because of the inability to really have consultative process. The executive committee has had a chance, as I said, to discuss this with the vice chancellor, but the UFS executive committee hasn't, I mean, the UFS as a body hasn't.
As a body, that's right.
So we are not opposing this, but we don't feel that we can, and I've been directed to vote an abstention. I do know that this plan is due in Albany by June 30th. I understand that. And in the past, it has been a year-to-two-year process.
Yes.
And I do appreciate, we do appreciate your new tenure as vice chancellor, and new tenure of the chancellor, really. It's a very difficult situation. What I would ask you to pledge to us in the most collegial way, that the strategic framework come to CAPRA and come to the board.
Absolutely, absolutely, and with time, and with sufficient time.
Yes, right.
And consultation. I do pledge that. Again, I know this process was started too late, no excuses, and, you know, we are deeply sorry. We're pleased to pledge that, and the UFS has been nothing but collegial and cooperative. On the one matter that you raised that we did not address, the School of Professional Studies, there was concern that singling a school out for its way of operating without full consultation with the leadership of the school, that this was not the forum for that concern. However, the concern is noted.
And I request to have that one reference to a charge. And I request to have that one reference to a charge to the UFS, that we would provide the framework for open access. We ask that that be removed. I haven't seen, I gather this is the same document, so.
We made, we made the four changes.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we did make four changes.
I hope that was one of them.
Right, but with, SBS was not, but I think.
Because we, it's kind of an anomaly to name the UFS and give it a charge, which we haven't been asked to do or agreed to do. We may be willing to do it, but no other entity is charged in this master plan to do something, and we kind of felt singled out the way SBS is being singled out.
Right, singled out, right.
So it's as if, you know, it's the only role the UFS would play, which isn't true. So we would like the UFS mentioned in terms of the open access framework to be deleted.
Absolutely.
Trustee Shorter, you have any more questions?
No, I will state, I plan to abstain as well, pending a more careful read and thought through this, making every effort to come up with a conclusion before the 27th, although I'm sure I would be a minor vote. In addition to the time concern, and by the way, I'm a fast reader, so I've read chapter five already, and you can see, I would agree with Mr. Rabbinowitz, Professor Rabbinowitz, that it's a history of what has happened as opposed to what's going forward with regard to CUNY's real estate. And that's my second concern. I am quite frankly surprised, given the small number of trustees, that we were not all interviewed, particularly some of the trustees have areas of specialty that are critical to this component. I was never at any point consulted on this with regard to input and interviews, and I find that a, what do I say, a small lapse, because I would love to have had some input in terms of a four-year period on real estate. I am going to abstain, Mr. Chair, and I will come back to you after I have done a thorough review of this.
May I amend my request? I don't want to imply that the strategic framework should come only to CAPRA. I think it should go to fiscal. I think it should go actually to all the board committees, because all of these areas are going to be addressed in some way by the strategic framework.
You're right, the master plan is bigger than the academic interview.
Right, exactly, so.
So the strategic framework will go to all the committees?
I would like to make that a motion, or should we do that as a motion, or, if you say it will, then that's fine.
You know, I cannot, it's not my place to say it will, so I.
May I ask why it's not your place to say that? I don't, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm putting you on the spot.
No, 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 no.
I don't mean to, this is information only.
Right, right. Because I'm not the one who sets the, the, you know, who, who sets the charges for the other committees. Indeed, I don't set the charge here. It is, it is the chair, but I would be more than willing, trustee Shorter, I would be more than willing.
Do what?
To argue that, I just, you know, again, I can't guarantee it. That's my only, my only comment. I support what you're saying. I see the logic of it. It involves fiscal, it involves faculty and staff.
Student affairs.
Student affairs, absolutely.
Well, since you need a certain number of votes to bring it forward to the board, committee, Mr. Chair, I will support this, but I support it with a statement saying that I have reservations and that I expect to have those resolved as we go forward. And it includes clarification of where we are going with this and how we are going, including, and I, quite frankly, I did not, was not impressed by the fact that the strategic framework is virtually open-ended. I think it would be great if there were deadlines set for that as well, so that we knew what the milestones were.
That's right, yes, yes.
So I will, I will vote.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? So let me just summarize a little bit of the context, given that we understand the difficulties, you know, we have one of the most knowledgeable presidents in the state about the educational system and the compliance, there's a deadline, and obviously, you know, protected by Chancellor Rabbinowitz, has not been at this job two years. She came on last summer in July, and obviously, when you take on a new role, it's obviously, you know, you have, given the large, complex university, it's not easy to look at all the items. My side is always 20-20, and I think the good thing to hear is obviously the strategic framework is going to be the main component.
Yes.
Going forward, and that will make up, hopefully.
Yes, and that will go through the process, absolutely.
And engage all the faculty and all the students and all the stakeholders, including the trustees, trustee Shorter's points as well. And I think, given the sense of the deadline, I think we, you know, this is a compliance document that is, I've been taught as a youngster in Brazil that respect deadlines.
You do what?
Respect deadlines. My math teacher, my Japanese math teacher always says, "Respect deadlines."
Oh, deadlines, I thought you said your elders, I was about to be concerned.
So he said, you know, I remember him, you know, he said that to his class, and it stuck to my mind all those years, so I have always tried to meet deadlines. And given the circumstances and the difficulties, I think, you know, I think the fact that there's a component about, you know, the strategic framework does the plot that I hope that, you know.
One more question, maybe, before you call the vote. Does the ma, does this master plan have a section that deals, I saw the concluding statement, and I didn't read it that quickly, does it state clearly how this is going to be used with regard to a strategic framework and a process? Does the master plan say this document will be utilized in this fashion?
It refers to the strategic framework, but it does not define precisely what their relationship is. Now that the strategic framework is more developed, although it is by no means fully developed, we can spell out what that relationship is very clearly.
I think it would be helpful, Vice Chancellor Rabbinowitz, if the resolution that is placed before the full board addresses the, the relationship between the master plan and the strategic framework. So when the board votes.
You are absolutely right, or these questions will arise again at the full board.
Right.
That's an excellent point.
Yes, it really is.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other comments, suggestions? If none, like a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Second?
Second, please. Voters in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions?
Yes.
One abstention. Next is the informational item, the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy Center for System and Community Design.
Yes, this item is an informational item only, because this is a center wholly contained within the School of Public Health, the new graduate school of public health and health policy. It does not need to come before the board as a vote, but this is another example of innovation in the new school. This Center for Systems and Community Design is designed to be a hub of research excellence and innovation in health promotion and disease prevention through systems and community design. The mission of the center is to converge faculty, students, and external experts to develop and test new prevention strategies for the promotion of effective and sustainable systems and community change for health. Given the recognized complexity of public health challenges today with many interacting actors, factors, and sectors across biological, behavioral, social, and political, economic domains, the center is founded on a principle that a solution-oriented, complex systems approach is necessary for achieving lasting change and improving health equity. So just an informational.
And the dean is here.
As much as this is an informational item, we gain pride in seeking your approval, albeit not requiring a vote, for every step of the way in our growth. System science is a science that was embraced from industry in public health and public policy, which tackles the issue of the very diverse nature of variables that impact on health, be they economic, ecological, personal, psychological, or otherwise. And the usual approach towards seeking solutions and understanding solutions from the very traditional perspective lacks in efficiency and efficacy. And therefore, the adoption of system science in dealing with public health problems is innovative, much needed, and will put our school on the map for its competence in this important area.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. It's a very important topic.
Yes, yes, and the school is sorry, we really wanted to say. Thank you.
Any other items?
No, Mr. Chairman, that covers them. Thank you, and thank you colleagues for your, for your help.
Thank you for understanding. Yes, I move that we adjourn.
Trustee Shorter, do you agree?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.